Well, welcome. It's that time of year when we start discussing things that other towns only wish they could. How do we spend the $4.7 million surplus? How to make sure enough of that money goes back to the town residents who paid it that they feel in effect? But also, what articles are we going to go over? And what articles are we going to support to improve Milford? Tonight, we have three people from the FinCom here, so why don't we start with introductions?
Thanks, Al. Chris Moore, Chairman of the Finance Committee. Ray Horberger.
Andy Lozat.
Okay, guys, we got 41 articles, so this is a sprint tonight. Article number one, $400,000 storm water management.
Yeah, this is the continued effort that the town of Milford faces to keep up with the EPA and the levels of phosphorus that's going into the Charles River. This is the second installment toward our permitting process. We spent $400,000 last year. We're going to spend $400,000 this year, and $300,000 and $200,000 following.
And $200,000 after that.
Yeah, to get us to about $1.2 million in total expenditures. So this is just keeping up with what we're currently set up for our plan for.
But at the end of the day, we don't have a choice.
We really don't, because of, you know, the EPA and the guidelines they've put down.
So Finance Committee voted favorable, because there's really no choice. Article number two. I guess we have to, you can't call them the bottles. Buying bottles for TUI.
What'd you call it, the scuba bottles?
The scuba bottles, yes.
You were correct.
When TUI REV 2 came in, I said, oh, we're buying bottles for the firefighters. But anybody want to talk on that one?
I mean, it sounds like a pretty essential piece of equipment. I mean, sure that, what was it, $60,000 to replace the periodic?
Well, this year, it's about $1,250 a bottle. So this year, they're replacing $31,000 worth.
And it's not every year.
It's every three years.
Every three years.
So the $60,000 is, three years from now, there's a big tranche coming. But at the end of the day, the bottles are what keep the firefighters breathing when they run into fires for us.
We have a 15-year useful life, so these are up, and I think it's time.
That's it. Okay, we roll over to article three, compensated absences.
This is a, we do this every two or three years, depending on how this fund is depleted. At this point in time, it has been three years since we've depleted this fund. We're looking to basically supplement this fund with a $250,000 addition. As I mentioned, it'll probably be several years before we have to adjust it again. So we got a favorable recommendation on that as well.
And presumably, it's all baked into the collective bargaining agreements. I mean, it's an obligation of the town, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Right. So when you retire, you look and you say, your unused vacation, your unused sick time, part of the payment schedule or bargaining is that you get it paid when you retire. Now luckily, there's a cap on it now, so that helps us out. Number four. This is an interesting one, because a lot of people don't understand changing the Sierra Naturals contract by amending this bylaw.
Did they convert from non-profit to for-profit?
Yes.
Was that the necessity of this?
Originally, all the marijuana dispensaries in the state had to be nonprofit. So when Milford set up our bylaw, we were asked to make sure everybody was nonprofit. The state has changed it now to you can be for-profit. So this is more changing the bylaw, because Sierra Naturals is entitled. They can be for-profit, maintain their license.
Makes sense to me.
Number five, an engineering study for the Godfrey Brook.
Yeah, so it's just, it's an engineering study to take a look at what it takes to remedy the situation of the Brook. And obviously, there's work on a grant. I think, we think we learned the grant was not approved.
Correct.
And now we need the engineering study to see what it takes to do the work.
And the concern presumably is what, flooding in the nearby areas?
Well, what's happened is, you got three brooks in Milford. They were made with rocks and, you know, these are like 100-year-old brooks. So after a while, they collapse. And when they collapse, they flood the areas. So I think it was originally 20-plus million to do all three brooks.
Yeah, absolutely. This is something we've been pecking away at for a while. When grants become available, we apply for them, obviously. And as we get them, it gives us an opportunity to further repair the areas that the town engineer feels are the worst parts of the brooks themselves.
We made a conscious decision. We were not going to take, you know, $100 that we have and do a long part substandard ways. We'll do a shorter part, as Chris said, we'll do little pieces, but do them in a way that if we had all the money to do it, we would have it done that way. And that way, it's there forever, or at least for the next 100 years.
I mean, if the obligation was that big to begin with, I think the town is doing pretty well to be, it's sort of almost invisible, right? It's just little pieces here and there.
And the problem was, if we go and fix it, let's say we take the money and we fix it, the chance of us getting money to reimburse what we already paid for is slim to none. So we're better off patching what we have to, and you know, we're spending a couple hundred thousand dollars each year. You know, you know better than we do as a finance guy, the interest on $25 million. You know, we're better off just nibbling away, and as long as we're doing it in a permanent manner, we're set. Okay, article six, Sierra Naturals. Again, now this is about their current host agreement and how they pay.
Yeah, currently, the payments go right into the general fund. What this article is asking is that their payments go directly into the stabilization fund. We've always said that when anyone did anything with a grant or whatever, we always tell people, do not put that right into the budget, because that's a recurring expense, okay? These payments could end at any point in time, so we don't want any of our.
Four years.
Yeah, so we don't want any of our budget, budgetary items to be tied to a funding source that could go away at any point in time.
We signed a five-year agreement, quarter million dollars a year. And recently, Sierra Naturals, Mike increased his payment by 25, I think it was.
$25,000, because they were expanding their facilities, and they thought because they're expanding, they should expand the amount of money paid to the town.
So the idea is, let's not get used to having that in anybody's budget?
Yep.
Because five years from now, or four and a half years from now?
No.
It's gone.
Yep.
Okay. Article seven, personnel board. This shot ought to be quick.
Yeah, so we talked about it last night, and the idea was that there's certain situations where there's jobs that are classified as full-time, to make them part-time jobs and make them hourly. And what was important is, we're really just taking the annual salary and dividing it by the number of hours worked in a year, which is generally considered around 2,000. And it's going to be an hourly job going forward, and you know, lifeguard was an example of that. And the use cases were really more about those types of jobs with summer work versus like, nobody was talking at all about taking full-time jobs and forcing them into part-time. So it made a lot of sense.
I frankly don't know what was being done before. If the slot wasn't available on an hourly basis, what were they doing with jobs that were by necessity part-time?
Paying them hourly.
Paying them hourly.
I mean, let's face it, you're not going to hire the eight or 10 lifeguards, or 20 lifeguards that Pete needs in the summer and pay them for a year.
Right.
You know, and you can't pay them three cents an hour to pretend you're paying them.
So this is cleanup.
This is cleanup. Okay, article eight, Pine Grove Cemetery, the crematorium.
Yeah, we refer to sponsor on this. We don't have, so it has no financial impact, and we don't really have any pervy with that.
No, there's a growing trend that we're seeing of people being cremated. They need more space to cremate. Makes sense. Okay, as we roll into article nine, the AV system. This is before your times.
It was before the times. We were told last night it was very important. I don't know exactly what the.
Well, as Al has mentioned, it's, town media is a heck of a lot better than it used to be. You would have microphones that wouldn't work, people couldn't hear. It really was, it was a bad scene. Several years ago, we did the audio system. So you'll notice that now, with all the microphones, everybody can hear in the back. It's not people yelling, oh, what did you, you know, what did you say? Well, the second half of AV is V, the visual. So this is going to do things like an electronic screen that's going to come down from the back, AV inputs from several places, so that computers off to the side can access the screen. They even talk about that this just isn't just a town meeting thing. Anything can be held up there now, movies.
Kids, movies for kids.
It's just bringing our town hall, where we have our meetings, and the central point of our town, into the 20th century.
You missed the famous presentation, where for 40 minutes, we tried getting an overhead projector to work. Tried a different overhead projector, tried everything we could, and the poor people presenting the article, we, I think we offered them crayons and some paper.
I've been there one time, and the string fell off the screen. So they couldn't get, they couldn't get the screen down, because it's literally just, you pull the string to get it down.
That's a problem.
So I mean, this is what we were dealing with, and this is going to fix it.
Article 10, personnel board.
No, article 10 is, oh, I apologize, about the personnel board. Yes, we refer to sponsor on this. It is about the personnel board.
It is about, the personnel board has to be from Milford.
Yep.
I know there's been confusion the last few years. I think this just says, Milford is 01757, you got to live within those boundaries.
Yeah.
Number 11, conservation committee.
So this is basically just transferring the parcels from one non-tax district to another, right? And it's just people, what, better equipped to handle the particular type of property?
I was amazed that 479 acres, that's a lot of land, and it's key land that is awful close to our water supply. So I mean, the ConCom has always done, Conservation Committee's always done a good job protecting. So this takes the remaining 17 parcels, and I think five of them are under some kind of control anyway. But the 17 that weren't controlled by the Conservation Committee now will be.
Well, they will be.
Where it should be.
Okay, SFH Realty Trust. Land on the side of the quarry, moving it from residential to commercial.
And usually, and, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's a parcel of land, and we talked about it last night, it'd be difficult to make it residential. So it makes sense to make that, you know, a commercial property, if we know where that is. It's a busy place, it's loud.
And by moving it that way, this is my favorite one, is we increase the taxes collected by 50%.
That's right, I say, we usually on zoning articles, we don't, we refer to sponsor, but when they're increasing income, we vote favorable for it.
Absolutely.
Okay, we roll into 13, where we talk about injured on-duty account.
This is like the replenishment of the compensated absences, right? I mean, this is a collective bargaining obligation for injured public safety workers, right?
Yeah, this is fun. I always hate seeing dollars come out of it, because that means a Milford person is going to hurt or injure.
Yeah, I'd rather never pay a penny out of this, because nobody got hurt. But at the end of the day.
It happens.
You know, firefighters or policemen who put their lives on the line for us, you got to take care of them. And I think, if I remember right, it was down to like $87,000.
$87,000, yeah.
Which, you know, one major issue, and you could drain that pretty quick. Library, article 14.
Yeah, so the children's room library. The carpet in there was installed in 2007, 2008 renovation, and it's seen a lot of feet on it, and I think it's worn out, and it's time to replace the carpet. So $25,000 project to replace that carpet.
And that's been on the planning, I've got to say, five or seven years that we've been talking about that and the shelves, we'll get to later.
They did the steps last year, right?
The steps were a little bit different, because we were worried about it being dangerous with big chunks. Now they look gorgeous and they're safe, but this is simple. A lot of kids use it, it wears out, we're happy. Article 15, one that the Finance Committee did not discuss, from the bond tempos.
Yeah, this is another refer to sponsor. This article is presented by a resident that is saying that only people coming from the Police Chief Search Committee will be able to be hired as police chief by the selectmen. So once again, it's a non-financial article, so we refer to sponsor.
Yeah, and again, you could have absolutely asked me, and I would have sworn, we set up a 12-person, if you want to call it, you know, non-partisan, because it's equally split amongst all the different factions or people in Milford, you know, to evaluate and pick finalists for the police chief. I never thought that the selectmen could just say, no, thank you, we'll pick our own. That made no sense to me.
Well, they're the hiring authority. I mean, they can hire anybody they want. I mean, they could hire me as police chief. I mean, it doesn't, they, once again, the hiring authority for.
That's going to take hours of therapy to remove that idea.
It'd be the worst decision they ever made. But the point is, any hiring authority, whether it's the Highway Department, Parks Department, whatever, that department always has the final say on who's going to be hired. So this is kind of, well, it's not kind of, it is taking the power away from the selectmen and being able to choose their own candidate. It's saying that they, they have to choose from who the chief's going to.
Doesn't it remove all the politics? You can't stack the deck if you got 12 different people. Nobody, nobody can influence 12 different Milfordians.
Yeah, well, certainly, that's the intention of the article is.
So, you know, we had it in, it just seems like a logical cleanup step. Article 16, somebody want to talk about school?
This is to put the former Purchase Street School up for bid. The town hasn't really been earning anything significant in terms of the net income. I think there's a daycare there now.
Yeah.
I'm not really sure why the town should be in the landlord business, as a general proposition anyway.
Well, we're not very good at it. In seven years, we've netted $7,000.
Yeah, with all the attendant risks and.
With all the exposure. But you think about it, if we were getting $11,000 just taxes on the dirt in the house, that's ours to keep.
Right.
So they're paying pilot, they're paying what they need to, $11,000, and then we end up spending $30,000 on a boiler and a roof and service. So we net a whole $1,000 a year and have all the risk. So this makes, to me, perfect sense. Highway surveyor.
Well, this is one where there's a piece of equipment that we ended up, really, it's a passover situation, where we're not going to go forward with this one right now, there's a little bit of work to do in the background. So the piece of equipment is a mower, and there's some conversation around sharing it between departments, and there's probably just a little bit of work to do before we go forward.
And this is one that got put on, it was not on the five-year plan, so there, we'd never really had a chance to vet it, to really go through it. So there's some hesitation when you don't have an informed opinion to go spend $180,000. I understand that the trees, when we first started on the trail, were that big, now they're that big. So the little crab-looking thing, when it's, can't cut the big trees anymore.
And the issue is, it's not necessarily going to be needed by, needed by the Highway Department on a full-time basis. It might be shared with the Parks Department, and we want to make sure that everyone agrees on the compatibility of the equipment, et cetera.
I have a feeling, this is not dead. In the past, when the FinCom has said, boys, girls, you've got to share your toys, or we're not funding it, somehow, the boys and girls get together and decide, well, sharing a toy is better than not having a toy. So just mark my words, I don't think it's dead yet. But it does make sense that the FinCom said, until we have a good understanding, because, I mean, I understand Scott, to rent one is six grand a week.
Yeah.
We rented it for two weeks last year, right? So that's not full utilization of the equipment.
So if he can use it during the winter, which is when he needs it most, and Parks can use it during the summer, that would make a lot more sense. And you know, spending $180 once versus renting it now three, four weeks at six grand a pop, within seven years, you got it paid for. Okay.
We have to, article 18?
Article 18.
That was a modification in the level of the position for building, local building inspector. I think there was a concern about being able to find suitable candidates at the existing threshold, so there was a rise in the level, but a reduction in the stage of the level. You called them chutes and ladders?
Chutes and ladders.
He hasn't been around long, but he's got all your terminology.
He's learning about chutes and ladders when people play these games. But at the end of the day, it looks like, what, $1,000 impact?
$1,000, yeah.
We go to 19, the treasurer wants to rescind $2 million of bonding authority.
Yeah, the Sewer Department, and they are such a well unit in what they're doing over there. They are spending almost no money on interest in a project of $5 million. They're funding it all themselves. The Finance Department did a great job with moving money out of their enterprise fund, which we call stabilization, same thing, savings account. And it always was planned in strategy on how moving the money to pay off that debt and not incur basically any interest at all whatsoever. It's a wonderful program that they did to fund the sledge updating program, up.
The building.
Building, thank you, over at the Sewer Department. And this money is basically just taking their money out of their stabilization and paying off the $2,000.
Hats off to Zach once again, because he advised us not to borrow the $5 million, to allow the Sewer Department to borrow $2 million if needed. And then he, they managed it so that retained earnings, kept picking up the bills. Now they're at the end, and they say, we have $2 million, we don't need to borrow anything. So we never spent any money on interest.
So it's like they created their own little sinking fund.
They really did, it was a great.
All this is doing is saying.
Great shell game.
We had, you know, pre-approval on our credit card to spend $2 million, we don't need it, take it off. Okay, fire chief, new toy.
The new toy, it's going to be engine number five. So either number one or two would be auctioned off at bid at some point, but it's time for a new engine to replace one of those two, depending on the assessment of them. We've been planning for this, and it's about $700,000 for the all-in truck here, but it's been in the plan, and we've been funding it along the way, I'm told.
We put $650,000 away two years ago.
In the stabilization?
In the short term. Not in the big stabilization, but the capital account. And we went to TUI REV 2 and said, do you really need it this year? He said, no, I could wait till next year, but will I lose it? We said, we don't think so. Town meeting's never been that shortsighted. And last year, he said, still don't need it, but getting close. So this year, we need it, it's $700,000, but we already have $650,000 put away. Okay, maternity leave, article 21.
This is what, a modification of the town's policies to bring it in line with the state law on family and medical leave?
Bingo.
There's no financial impact, as I recall.
But you've just said it, the state laws changed, our bylaws are behind, you can't be.
Right.
Right? So this just brings us up to what the state laws are saying. Okay, this one I love, $4,000 bond.
Yeah, our current bylaws on this particular thing is so old, that it's said, any contract that the selectmen go into, over $4,000 needed to have a bond on it. I mean, we spend over $4,000 a year in toilet paper. I mean, it's ridiculous.
Toilet paper bond.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is increasing the wording in there, and swapping out from $4,000 to $40,000, much more reasonable number to have to have a bond backing the contract.
Yeah, paying for a bond of $4,000, it just didn't make any sense, because you've still got to pay all the admin fees. Okay, we roll to article 23, the front-end loader.
That's the Highway Department, new front-end loader. So this one's been on the plan, again, it's on the five-year plan, $250,000, we'll get a new front-end loader for the Highway Department. It sounds to me like they've been planning this for some time, it makes a lot of sense.
Been on the plan, the current front-end loader is not loading, sitting in the yard, dead, and it's not worth fixing. And again, all of these have been favorable by the Finance Committee. Now we go to the, well, it's not the Milford Room anymore, the Paul Curran Memorial Room? It's Paul Curran Room, it used to be the Milford Room, where we store all the, I mean, the really critical items from Milford's history.
It's a $10,000 allocation for additional archival storage costs, which I think has a little bit of cushion in there, just in case there are some unknowns.
They don't know what happens when they pull the shelves off the wall.
Exactly.
But the biggest thing is, the current wooden walls apparently have a negative effect on some of the paper and articles in that room. So they did check, this was years ago when we put it on the plan, the library checked and found out that the, I don't know if it's aluminum or stainless, or whatever metal shelves are what's being recommended to maintain the integrity of the items in there. $10,000. Article 25, HVAC at Stacy.
Yeah, they've been upgrading the HVAC in all the schools. This is one of the last projects to be done in upgrading the Stacy HVAC system. It will allow for remote access to the HVAC system, so if Rob Quinn, the school gets called off because of snow, he can turn down the heat, so we're not paying heating bills for that day. And it gives us a lot of flexibility with that, as well as just the basics of the HVAC system need to be updated, because they've been so old, parts are becoming unavailable for it. Service calls, obviously, you know, when they come and they don't have a part available, you know, you have to buy them from a third party. So this is an upgrade that's been on the plan, and we need to tap on.
We need to heat the school, we need to cool the school. Paul Revere did a great job when he installed it, but it's been there since '95, it's just wearing out. This is part of what we always been on the school about, general maintenance, don't wait till you have a catastrophic failure. While it's limping, not dead.
Yep.
Okay, article 26, new liquor license.
New liquor license for Taqueria on South Main Street, to refer to sponsor.
Well, you know what I never understood? Do we ever retire liquor licenses?
Not a lot of people give them up.
I mean, I know a lot of people that have them don't want any more, because it diminishes their value.
Right.
But every year, it seems like we add one or two. It's always curious, what happens to the old ones? Do we ever take any of them back?
What happens when the restaurant closes?
Yeah. I mean, that's a question we ought to pose to the selectmen.
Well, I assume that there was one sitting there, unused, well, that's a good question.
Well, a lot of them get transferred with the previous owners when they sell the business.
It's a value.
Yeah, there's a value, and the license gets included with the building. That was, that was an old Milford trick for many, many years, that, you know, the building's worth $100,000, but the liquor license worth $200,000, now the building's worth $300,000.
Right.
You know.
Okay, article 27, ADA, we got a grant, and now we want money to do something.
Yeah, we have to hire some consultants to help us build a plan to become ADA compliant. And, you know, I think as we look at this $30,000, you know, there's about $150,000 in front of us, but there's more to come here to make, you know, the town and all the buildings in the town compliant for Americans with disabilities. So it makes a lot of sense, it's the right thing to do, for sure.
Not that we have much of a choice.
Not that we have much of a choice.
I mean, you don't want to, I don't want to say that we're doing it because we have to. I mean, there's a group of Milfordians who need some extra help, and we're just doing what, you know, God help us, if we needed it, we sure hope the Milfordians that we know and love would come to our aid, so we have to come to their aid.
So that's the beginning of a multi-year plan, and we'll see improvements around town.
$150,000.
$150,000.
I don't know if it even counts as the nose of the camel.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be quite a, quite a project, but a project worth doing.
Okay, dammit, article 28, Milford Dam.
Oh, yes. So when we did the Milford Pond restoration, that was the, was the pond itself. None of the dam functions were touched during that time. So about two years ago, or three years ago, when they looked at the dam, they rated it in fair condition, but they said upgrades needed to be done. So we looked at what the upgrades needed to be, they were afraid to even open the gates, because they were afraid they couldn't close them afterwards. So, and the people in the planes certainly are appreciative of the fact that they didn't test that out, because they would be flooded.
It's like, I can say I'm young, thin, and have hair.
Yeah.
If I look in the mirror, a fat old bald man saying, uh-uh.
Yeah.
So calling the dam in fair condition, when you're scared that if you open it, it might never close, and you could never bring the level back up, yeah, I'm a thin, young man.
So for $138,000, what this is going to do is, is going to repair the gates on the dam. It is going to remove the shrubbery around the area, because the encroachment of that shrubbery, the roots can get in and damage the lock functions and that type of stuff. So this is really to get that last piece of Milford Pond up, and to get the locks on that dam up to snuff.
Of course, we're still looking for the answer. Now, we understood that, I believe, Bill, TUI REV 2 didn't show up for a meeting, so the responsibility of the dam went to him. And he must have pawned off the responsibility of maintaining it to Scotty. What we don't know is, okay, Scotty's gonna make sure that it opens and closes. Bill's gonna make sure that the levels are correct. But if, who decides to pull the switch to lower the dam, to lower the water? Nobody's ever been able to tell us whose job it is to say, water's too high, lower it down.
We want to get the hundred-year storm. I told you I'd figure this out and I still will. On our next TV broadcast, I will let the town of Milford know, who holds the dam key?
Okay, Personnel Board.
There's a three thousand dollar allocation from the Town Committee Improvement Group.
Oh, I skipped that one, yes.
Twenty-nine, right?
Reno's Gizmoide.
This is for electronic anonymous voting at town meeting. I'm not sure why it's anonymous, is that because they don't have the capability to?
No, you, what Reno explained to us is, you know, when we take a vote, if it's not unanimous, many times, we have to stand up. And then everyone's gotta count and make sure.
So this would be the event of it's not unanimous, everyone's gonna be able to push a button?
Well, even, I mean, this will be, time to vote, push the button, comes up, thumbs up, done. Thumbs not up, now you go through and you, it can tell you if you have the necessary two-thirds and all. This does not allow anybody outside the room to vote. Because I was wondering, is this the first step towards, I can watch it on TV, sit home with a nice hot cup of coffee in my PJs and vote? And Reno said, no.
We'll find out the North Koreans are voting and.
So bottom line, you could knock ten to twenty minutes off the town meeting with all those up and downs, right?
Oh, absolutely. The town improvement.
Chris is unsure about that.
I just, I, I. I know, I totally agree with you. I mean, I'm the type of person, you know, I like standing, I like people to know when I stand up and vote for something. I want them to know that I got up there and talked about it and I'm proud to stand up and vote. And I know there are some people who, it affects their voting and I, you know.
I have a fundamental problem if I'm voting for somebody to represent me. I wanna know how you voted.
That's what I mean, that's just, that's my only thing.
If I'm gonna vote yea or nay, I should stand up and let the people at home see how I voted.
But I mean, if you really wanted to take that to the next extreme, you would be identifying each person's vote on each article and publishing that in the Town Crier or the Daily News or wherever. I mean, we're way away from that.
Now you're talking, if there was a system like that, I certainly would be on board for it. Like if you ever watch C-SPAN or whatever.
Yes.
You see the board and you see them light up and that type of stuff. So I'd really be on board on that, but I just think, as I said, I'm a town meeting member, I'm also the chairman of the Finance Committee, I vote as large. I like people to know how I vote, it's just the way it is, I don't know. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, but if they could incorporate something like that, you know, besides the electronics working, I'd be in favor of it.
Article thirty, when can I take a day off?
Well, the good news is if the town hires you now, you won't have to wait a year if this goes through. So it used to be that first year, and some of us remember our first job ever where you don't get a day off for your first full year before you get there. But it's not competitive right now from a hiring position and we know what unemployment's like and what it's like to attract and find talent. This makes sense to make it so you're eligible, I think it's a discretion of your manager, but after ninety days. So it makes sense to modernize a little bit and make it a little bit more liberal when you get your first day off, but there's a little bit of oversight still.
Well, but it's hard, I mean, you think about it. If there's a job in Milford Municipal and you're considering it and you're gonna go there in April, now you gotta go home to the kids and the wife and, or the husband and say, no vacation this year. We gotta wait till next year before we can go on vacation. Seems kinda harsh.
And I know the two new guys would be in favor, they want a day off from the FinCom.
No days off from the FinCom. So Article thirty-one.
This was a modification of the requirements for police chief, as I recall. To eliminate the agility requirement because that's typically not a requirement in other jurisdictions.
Only on TV, Hawaii Five-O, do they jump over cars and jump through, you know, windows. The consultant kinda said, we're not looking especially for senior police officers who aren't, you know, the youngest and most agile to be jumping, you know, over speeding trains and tall buildings.
The ability to juggle shouldn't be a prerequisite on being a police chief.
Okay. We look at thirty-two, the phone.
Thirty-two, thirty-two is a tough one because, you know, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar request for a telephone system for the police. And it's something we take fairly seriously because the assertion is that there's a lot of static and it affects not only calls inside the Police Department, but also with dispatch and nine-one-one calls. So top of mind for all of us is concern of the people of the town and the safety. From a problem, it's a little bit problematic for us and was represented and came was very late and there's not all the detail that we need to pass it right now. But a lot of interest in making sure that we pursue this from the perspective of the town. So this one had a lot of conversation amongst us over the last two days.
And I don't think I heard anybody say they were against it. It's just when we looked at it, it was never on a five-year plan. As a matter of fact, nine months ago, the previous chief said everything was fine. But yet we find that six months ago, something must have happened because they got a bid or a quote to replace the phone. But.
And then there was discussion last night about, do we know if there's a quick and easy fix? It was all kinda puzzling to me that, has a technician actually looked at the problem and recommended a solution? I mean, if my phone was staticky, I'd be calling Verizon or whatever. So I'm not sure we really know what the real problem is, let's get it solved.
No, but I liked how it ended up where the FinCom said, we're gonna recommend it gets passed over because otherwise, here's an article that was never on any plan, that we don't have enough information to have an informed decision. And what we could do is pass it over, start a proper investigation, and then it's twenty-five thousand dollars. Right, now my biggest worry is, is twenty-five enough? If you really go into it and maybe you should add more? Are we shortchanging ourselves just to get something through? But if it turns out to be twenty-five or thirty-five, in a month or two, we could handle it out of the FinCom Emergency Fund.
Yeah, certainly, and to be honest with you, I don't, we're taping this on October eleventh. You know, we have about two weeks to get to town meeting. Maybe we could even clear things up before town meeting, who knows?
So this could be a not dead yet.
Yeah.
Monty Python rides again in the town meeting. And that would be even something that we all would be happier, is if we could get the information, understand it. It doesn't get over the fact that articles have taken off because they weren't on the five-year plan and this one's put on, but if it's an emergency, then we look. Article thirty-four, the Youth Commission. Hy-Vac downstairs and dehumidifying.
We'll go back to thirty-three.
Oh, did I skip thirty-three? I'm sorry. Thirty-three, putting money back, the shot across the bow, putting money back into the police salary account.
I get emotional in this one, so you guys talk about it.
Yeah, the line item was deleted, as I recall, at the, at the May meeting. We have a interim police chief, we're gonna have a new police chief. This is simply to put the police budget back to where it was so we can adequately fund all the employees.
And of course, you know, as we talked about it last night, we are paying. But what we're doing is we're paying out of the wrong places, you know, and that means we're draining other parts of the budget that don't make a lot of sense and.
You can't make up salary money in the Police Department, not when they're running ninety-four percent of their budget as salary. So yes, this was a shot across the bow to get the selectmen's attention. Okay, it's been shot, now let's put it back because I feel safe in saying, we will have a police chief. Temporary, permanent, we will have a police chief. They will get paid. So if we don't replenish the money rolling into May, you have to have a balanced budget. So we will have to let dispatchers go, numbers of dispatchers to make up a hundred seventy grand. What happens when you let the dispatchers go? You pull active police officers off the street and you bring them into dispatch.
And you mentioned dispatchers because I think that's required by contract, right?
Right. You cannot let a policeman go prior to letting the dispatchers go. And the policemen then get taken off active, well, it's still active duty. I don't mean to diminish it, but they get taken off the street. So what did we do last year? Put SWAT people together to protect our kids? The idea of taking them out makes no sense to me. It was a shot across the bow, okay, you had your fun. I think town meeting is the wrong place to do it, but you got your attention, now let's get back to sanity. Okay, now to the youths.
Sure, so eighty-five thousand dollars we approved last night for air conditioning in the basement of the youth center. Part of that conversation was around more work in the basement, the finish like in the back half of the building. There's, there was a little bit of a challenging conversation for all of us in that is that some of it was a little bit of a surprise and that there was probably more work to be done. There was, there's a little bit of a study that needs to be done that wasn't in the plan for the follow-up work, right? So what we have some work to do together is, the eighty-five thousand dollars to air condition the first half, and now going forward, we gotta build a plan for the rest of it. You know, it has to be part of our capital plan, multi-year plan.
Yeah, and the eighty-five thousand was always in the plan. I may have missed it, the members of the Capital Committee may have all missed it. But when we heard the engineering costs went up, we assumed it was engineering for the head house, the first part. Last night we learned that, no, the extra twenty-five thousand was to do engineering to plan for another hundred thousand dollar expansion of Hy-Vac. Not to say it's good or bad, but years ago, we used to do this where you do a little bit and then you say, you already spent twenty, you might as well spend another hundred. And we promised, you were there, we promised town meeting, we wouldn't play that game. And I don't think the youth center meant to play the game, but if we approve twenty-five thousand for engineering for Phase Two, well, you're almost just guaranteeing you gotta do the Phase Two.
And that wouldn't get us to the end though, right?
No. But see, that's the point, I'd much rather go in front of town meeting and say, we did this with Police Department, when they entered a three-year lease on computers, thirty grand a year, we got up in front of town meeting and said, don't think you're voting thirty grand. You're voting a hundred, because a three-year lease, in the middle of the lease, you can't say, eh, we're done. The next year, town meeting, we got up and said, this is installment two, you already approved it. You can't approve it ahead, but in theory, you did. Third year, it's the last of the install, and it all went well. I would rather take this on and know that, number one, town meeting knows it's a hundred thousand some project. So this hundred was really, last night told us it's two hundred. So that doesn't feel right. But number two, we don't know where or when the work would be budgeted. And again, year, for years, we were doing studies, two, three years go by, and we gotta redo the study.
And let's be honest, nothing in that building has happened, you know, right to par. There's always been some issue or, there's always been a problem, it's an old building. There's always issues you're gonna run into when you're transferring an old building like that. So there's always been issues every time we've done any project in there.
Yeah, I think the point last night was also that, you know, nobody's principally against air conditioning the building or the entirety of the building, we just need to get it in the plan.
Right, and have information on what's coming so we can go to town meeting and say, hey, guys, yea or nay on another hundred fifty, or a hundred twenty, or whatever it is. And if they say yes, then we put the thirty in, we do it, and in the plan the next year or two, you do it. Thirty-five, hard-topping Vernon Grove Roads.
That's what, a hundred thousand allocated? And I, my recollection is that there's various pieces of the road that are starting to chip and fall away and there's some puddling of water which can create some longer-term damage. So needs to be straightened out and get the appropriate grading, it sounds like it's necessary.
The trustees said that they, at the last minute, they were told, put it in. So we had already planned to do a thirty, thirty, thirty in the next three years and get it done for ninety thousand. They put in a hundred forty because they didn't have time to do any research or anything. And they said, well, we'll do a hundred forty, and Jamie's pretty good with money, so he wouldn't spend it unless he had to. But it was like, we haven't vetted it, it was never on the plan for this year. It was on the plan, but not for this year. So we asked Jamie, would you put it off? Highway Department said he should do it for eighty-some thousand, not a hundred forty. Jamie came back and said, subsequent meetings have said he can do it for ninety-ish. So we asked if he would kind of not push it forward now. We designate it as, just pass it over now, designate it as a special item. Give us a few months to really study it and find out what we wanna do. And then come the May meeting, even though we don't do capital, this, we would not spend this money out of our one-point-five million budget. So the money would be available, we'd have time to really study it, and then we'd take it up at the May meeting. Article thirty-six, I love this article.
Highly contested, right? A lot, a lot of debate around this one, so.
Paul Boyslair is gonna retire, right? After, you know, how many years, forty years in the town hall and all? And he's a junior custodian.
Yeah, apparently that, there is no full custodian or senior custodian and this would change that to remove the word junior. So not a big Finance Committee impact or recommendation, but we were supportive of the change.
Tree Warden, fifty thousand dollars.
So this is the second year in the world the tree warden came before us. And we're having an issue with trees that are becoming diseased and unsafe. They're hanging over roadways and branches are falling, they're leaning toward houses, that type of stuff. So last year, he talked about this machine that was gonna come in and, for fifty thou, or a hundred thousand, excuse me, and cut down a hundred trees in three days and we're like, we don't believe you. But the guy next to him says, yeah, we'll do it, he was a professional, he had pictures of the build, the truck. I drove by and saw this last year when they were doing it. This thing could take down two hundred trees in three days. It's the most amazing thing I ever saw. The way it takes the trees, lifts them up, and he took down however many trees last year and it was a great success.
Biggest Ginsel knife.
Thing was unbelievable.
It dices, it slices.
So Chuck is returning this year for fifty thousand to rent that vehicle again, to take down more of the diseased trees. And once again, he can achieve so much in such a short period of time using this vehicle. I guess there's only two on the whole eastern seaboard. So this fifty thousand is to rent that truck again and take down some more diseased trees.
The only issue that came up is, here we go again. Not on the plan, not brought forward, not studied, just surprised it was added. Now Chuck, he swears to us next year he's not coming back. I thought we heard that before, but we'll see.
And we did say on the way out to Chuck, if he could please just, I mean, understand diseased trees, there's nothing you could forecast, I mean, just like a diseased person, you can't forecast that. But at least you can get an idea of a trend and can he put something together so that we're not having surprises? At least put this even on, you know, two or three years out and hey, if you don't use it, just like we do with all the rest of the things on the plan, just bump it up.
But he has a budget. I don't want anybody thinking that the tree warden has a handsaw and a cup of coffee. He has fifty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, this would be his entire budget for the year.
This would be his entire budget, but he does have money to take care of trees. IT Department runs into protected building.
Sure, so it's an old building, of course, in town hall and you've been punting for years on rewiring and modernizing it. So now I think it's time, and you know, I think we can all relate to it is, you know, whether they're working at home, you think about how much bandwidth we use, it just keeps increasing. And you know, if you try to run all the old wiring, and we heard a lot of stories about a lot of splitters on wires with multiple computers going into an old wire, and it starts to cripple infrastructure. And it becomes important too, because then you can't put firewalls in place and you can't, you can't modernize a lot of the hardware too if you don't have the right wiring. And that's a big deal for municipalities and corporations alike with a lot of, you know, a lot of people trying to take advantage of internet connectivity these days.
And you guys may not be as old as me, so you may not remember CAT three. You know, that had one wire and eight electrons are allowed through it.
That's what we're working on right now.
And it's, it's, the system can only move as fast as the slowest thing. I mean, you could have a hose this big on one side and a hose this big. If you have a straw in between them, the data is only gonna move as fast as the straw because eventually it all runs into that. And when you're having fiber run into CAT three, basically the whole building is CAT three. Because that's, how the building's gonna run.
And then originally, we had thought it would be sixty thousand to wire the building. Then we ran into protected, beautiful building. So it went up to a hundred grand and I'm all for it because I don't wanna see somebody stringing ugly wires. Our town hall is beautiful. I hate to spend an extra forty, but number one, you gotta get rid of the straw. The straw's bad enough, it's when two other guys are tipping into the straw. So, you know, we end up paying a little bit more to make sure that our beautiful town hall stays beautiful. Okay, thirty-nine, Ms. Clark needs a new floor down at the senior center.
Yeah, it's a, it's a twenty-year-old floor and it's been, just been worn out. It's not like it's damaged or anything, they get a lot of use down there. Lot of people, lot of chairs being moved on stuff, tables, Bobby DeVito walking back and forth.
We hear that Bobby shuffles his feet too much, so he's wearing out the floor.
So the point is that the floor's worn out, I mean, it's a, it's a highly-used area and it's time for replacement. It's been on the plan, so.
To me, it's like the carpet up at the children's room. It's a good thing that it's being used more than we hoped for. And if we gotta replace the floor a little earlier, God bless. Because, you know, these are the people who built Milford, so if we can help. I remember when Sue first came to us and said she wanted to put in the upstairs gymnastics room. And we all looked at her like, seriously? You know, senior citizen gymnast. You know, senior citizen gymnastics. She says it's one of the busiest rooms up there. It's terrific.
It's a gym, not gymnastics. I can see them working out, I can't see them doing cartwheels. But that's, not for nothing, I had to throw that correction in there.
Because it was funny. I wanted to give Bobby DeVito and tell him he's part of it, he should be doing cartwheels.
Front somersaults.
Okay, winding up forty.
This is what, to remove a part-time position that's not being used anyway?
That doesn't exist. We didn't need a lot of discussion. And for those who read it at town meeting, there is a typo. The FinCom did recommend favorable. When I was typing this up in the middle of the night last night, I missed this one, I just left it. The recommendation is...
I thought it was like a teaser, like we were gonna reveal it that night, like, stay tuned.
Okay, FinCom Article forty-one, two-point-nine million into stabilization.
It's a crazy number. It's a fantastic number. It's a wonderful number. I can't say enough good things, and it's through all the hard work of a lot of people. And I will drop an Al right now, there's a school coming. And I think that's become more evident and the talk about it has obviously increased. And the numbers on what potentially could be for some of the facilities in Milford are astronomical, higher than we've ever seen for any project in town. Our commitment to stabilization contributions have to be stronger than ever to be able to do a project of that size. And putting together this two-point-nine million dollars into stabilization is a fantastic achievement through controlled spending on department heads. Good work by the selectmen, good work by these guys right here. It's just, it's a great accomplishment, as you can tell, I'm very proud of it, so...
What was the number last year, Chris, do you remember?
I think we put six hundred thousand.
Six hundred, yeah, that's what I thought, it was under a million, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the last article, forty-two, we talk about not only putting two-point-nine into stabilization, but of the four-point-seven million we have as a surplus. And, you know, you gotta tip your hat to our department heads because they're spending the money as if it's theirs. You know, when people complain about Milford, I laugh. "Oh, yeah, Milford's terrible, horrible." Pick a town anywhere near us that you'd rather be at their town meeting than at ours discussing a four-point-million-dollar surplus. And then you get the, "Oh, maybe it's not as bad as..." You know, but at the end of the day, last year, what did we do, three-point-seven-four towards the levy?
Yep, so we were able to match it this year, which was another one of the fantastic things. Like you said, these last two articles, I just smile about and I get permagren. And I joked at the last meeting, I don't know what it was, seven years ago, when we did one-point-eight million, and we were like...
You'll never sustain it.
"Well, you shouldn't even do this one-point-eight million dollars, it's a mistake because once you do it and you can't unring that bell, it hurts." And then we did it, and then all of a sudden, next year, it was two-point-two, then it was two-point-four, then two-point-eight, three-point-one, three-point-five, and now we're at three-point-seven last year, and we're hoping to do three-point-seven this year.
When somebody got up and said, "I want my cents."
Oh, yeah.
"I want my pennies back," because everybody kept arguing that, "Well, whatever you give to the people, it's only gonna be pennies." The problem is, it's not our pennies. You know, this is not a feudal system where we have serfs paying the town managers or whatever a tithe that they must. It's their money. And if we don't absolutely need it, I don't know how you can argue we shouldn't give it back.
You're the people that change.
But, you know, you gotta, you gotta think about it because people will say, "Why do you always overtax?" And if you think about it, if your children came home with a ninety-seven on their report card, I'd be pretty happy about it. That's what we're doing. We're hitting ninety-seven percent efficiency on our budgeting. But three percent of a hundred and seven million? Guess what? You're in the four-million-dollar bracket. I just, I'm scared to death to budget any tighter. Because there's gonna be the year when something happens, and we don't want to go back in the middle of the year and ask for more money. Or use profanity. Up until now, no profane words, there's only been one person that tried to use profanity at the FinCom. Profanity being, the most profane word is two-and-a-half override. The second worst word is debt exclusion.
Yeah, and really, what we're telling the taxpayers is, you know, if we spent this, we would be overtaxing you by three-point-seven million dollars. And it's not fair to the people. And once again, people may complain, "Well, it's only twelve dollars per thousand on my house." You know what, I don't want to hear that. The point is, you don't go into the grocery store and buy a gallon of milk and say, "I want to pay extra." You know what I mean? Nobody does that, you know, even whether it's thirty cents, forty cents. The point is, the town of Milford provides great services to this town, whether it's trash pickup, schools, leaf pickup, a senior center, a van that goes around, and we do all that, and we still have some extra money. I could find new projects for that three-point-seven million dollars, but it's not our money.
Yeah, let's not forget, you do have the environmental issue coming, and as Al points out, the schools. So, you know, it's not like we're not gonna have those kinds of long-term issues.
And the biggest issue in my mind, I mean, we always talk about we have to do certain things for our kids, but we also have to remember the people who built Milford. The reason we're here in this nice studio, in this great town, is there was a group of people who built our town, who taught us these values. And some of them are living on fourteen-hundred, sixteen-hundred dollars a month. So I'm where Chris is. I'm glad if, Andy, you can say, "Ah, eighteen bucks, I don't care, doesn't mean anything to me." Or eighty dollars if you got a house. But the person who has to buy their meds and has got fourteen-hundred bucks to start with, that could mean they don't take their meds or they don't eat tonight. So in my mind, we owe them the diligence of not spending a penny more than we have to. And realistically, when you can add capital items at the last minute like we did in town, it says there's plenty of room in there. Any last words on your first show?
I got nothing, do you have anything?
No, I'm the newest member of the FinCom and it's a privilege to be part of it and learn a lot every time through it. So I appreciate everybody's help in getting me up to speed.
So everyone at home, if you would like to see him working the mic on October twenty-eighth, Brad will be doing his favorable, unfavorable show.
New guy, Andy, you're off the hook.
Forty-one times, you get to use the microphone on...
The new guy always gets the mic, so when the moderator says, "What's the position of the FinCom?", you get to enunciate it.
And it's all your fault if the crowd doesn't like you.
Well, thanks, guys. More importantly, thanks for watching out all the money and having an input and making this town as financially stable as it is. And keep in mind, there's a school coming. And as always, get to understand, I mean, I know we get the three questions all the time. "Are you raising to the two-and-a-half limit?" No. "Have you funded all the critical capital items?" I would say I'm biased, but yes. And third, "Will we have a surplus?" Well, in fourteen years, but that's not enough. You should understand what we're spending over a hundred million dollars of your money on. And I joke about it, but when we were kids, this is before Tommy, all the way back to Clarence, with a hundred million dollars, you could have bought Milford, they would have thrown in Hope Dale Menden on top of it.
That's another one of his good ones, you'll learn that one.
So as always, to our six loyal viewers, may God bless, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having us.